Roll call, please.
Mayor Bremel?
Here.
Alderman Lockett is absent. Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Crockenberg?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All that can, please rise for the pledge to the legions.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is public comments. I don't have any paperwork and anybody have anything to say tonight? I guess we're good. Official and staff comments? Chief of Police? The...
Yeah, the police department has started collecting toys within our police department for the Toys for Tots, raising... collecting toys for our annual Christmas event. And last year, we collected several, several carloads of toys. It was very successful and we're hoping to do that again this year. So if anybody has any toys, please bring them down to the police department. We'll be collecting them. Thank you.
Thanks. Mayor?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Alderman? No one? Alderman Widener?
I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and I'm grateful for everyone's support over the year and look forward to a festive holiday season. Thank you.
Thanks. Clerk? Treasurer? We'll move on with the business of the meeting. Item one, presentation and consideration of an Americans with Disabilities Act self-evaluation and transition plan agreement with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. And that would be management analyst Hernandez Galvin.
Yes. Good evening, City Council. So in March of 2004, staffers have noticed that the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, CMAP, was offering technical assistance for ADA self-evaluation and transition plans. So we took this opportunity to apply for this program. And in June, this past June, we were notified that we were one of the cities selected to receive this technical assistance. So tonight, I have Jules Voight from CMAP that will give a presentation about the program and the agency's mission. And ultimately, at the end, we'll be requesting that council pass a resolution to approve the partnership between the city and CMAP.
Can y'all hear me okay? Excellent. All right. Thank you all so much for having me here today. My name is Jules Voight and I'm a planner with the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. And today, I'm here to talk to you about the Warrenville Americans with Disability Act, or ADA Transition Plan, specifically regarding the public right-of-way, or the PROW. So Warrenville's Public Works Department successfully applied for this project through CMAP's technical assistance program, and I'm pleased to serve as the project manager for this project. And while she's unable to join us today, Jamie Jackson is the program manager for the ADA program here at CMAP. So for those of you who are unfamiliar with CMAP, we are... we were established in 2005 by Illinois's Regional Planning Act to effectively address development and transportation challenges in the northeastern Illinois region. And so we essentially do long-range transportation planning and coordination and administer federal funding for transportation projects. And so while we talk about the ADA Transition Plan project, I want to talk about why this project is important and the primary demographic that we're hoping to benefit with this work. So I really love the graphic here on the right that you can see here in the top right-hand corner. You can see the sign that we typically see for accessible restrooms or accessible parking spaces. It shows a person using a wheelchair. But in reality, the majority of people with disabilities is 84% that don't use a mobility device. So that could be... we consider it like an invisible disability. And so that could be chronic pain, or an autoimmune disease, or conditions like heart disease. And so these are all conditions that you might not be aware of just by looking at somebody, but they are nevertheless technically somebody that has a disability. And in the northeastern Illinois region, nearly 500,000 people, or 5% of our population, have a disability, and this plan seeks to benefit them. So you're probably wondering, I wonder how this affects Warrenville? So based on the data that we were able to gather from the American Community Survey, around 11% of Warrenville has a disability. So the top disabilities that came out were independent living difficulty, which does not include residents of nursing homes or skilled nursing facilities, ambulatory difficulties, and cognitive disabilities, or difficulties, excuse me. And so I do want to say also that these are only folks who self-identified as being disabled. And so there might be people who don't consider themselves disabled if you use glasses, but... and haven't identified as much. And so this number could be far higher than this 11%. I also wanted to point out that the largest population here in Warrenville with disabilities is those between 18 and 64 years old. And so I think it really just shows how disabilities can affect anyone at any age and how important this project is for your community. And so now we'll get to what this project specifically looks at. So there are different administrative requirements as part of the ADA. There are some that are applied to municipalities across the board. All public entities have to have a notice to the public about ADA requirements, and all public entities have to conduct a self-evaluation. And this is essentially an assessment of all programs and services to make sure that there are no barriers to participation by any individual with disabilities. So all public entities have to do that. And then public entities of 50 or more employees have to conduct the last three notes there as well. So one is an ADA coordinator, whom I just met here. Alma is your ADA coordinator. You also have to have a grievance procedure, which is a process of how somebody goes about making a complaint. If they find something that is not in compliance, you just have to post that procedure. And then the last one is to develop a transition plan, which is what I'll get to here. So a transition plan is essentially a roadmap of showing how to go from current conditions to compliance. And so in this case, we'll be looking at the built-in environment specifically within the public right-of-way. So that could be sidewalks or curb ramps, crosswalks, et cetera. And essentially, we look at the self-evaluation. It's kind of like an audit of all of the conditions that you have. And we look at how do we go from existing condition to compliance? And it outlines all of those elements and how to get there, the timeline, who's responsible, et cetera. And something that I really love about the transition plan is that it's a collaborative effort, right? It involves working with people in the community who have disabilities, who care for someone with a disability, parents of schoolchildren who could be benefited from an ADA transition plan. There's so many folks who this plan benefits, not just people with disabilities. And getting them involved in the process is really helpful because you know you only have so many funds within a given year, right? But involving people in the community can help you prioritize where those improvements are made and when, so that way you can really focus in on those efforts that are really high need, and then later down the line, get to elements that are maybe not as much a priority for folks, right? And it also just helps for accountability. We want to show like best interest. So if somebody points out, hey, this is an issue, you can come back and say, we have a plan, we've identified it, and you know, we can point to a specific point further down alone of where we'll address that issue. So it's a collaborative effort, is what we like to say. And finally, this project should take approximately 10 months between the self-evaluation, which we conduct, and then actually drafting the plan. So we'll have a document at the end that encompasses those two elements and setting the timeline for making changes and ultimately assigning specific responsibilities likely within the Public Works Department of who's responsible for carrying out those changes. I don't know how I'm doing on time here. And then last, I just have some images here that show how some of these elements we can see are accessible or not. So in this image, this person is climbing over a snowbank, right? Because the sidewalk hasn't been cleared, so that if somebody especially was using a mobility device, this would be almost impossible for them to access, right? With here also, like, somebody was going to have to really walk through a large puddle to get wherever they're going. My favorite is sidewalk that leads to absolutely nowhere, not really beneficial. If you have a stroller, if you're pushing a kid, or you have a cart with you for groceries, this is going to make it really difficult for somebody, again, a bus walk or a bus shelter with a sidewalk that doesn't go anywhere. So these are the things that we're especially looking at when we do the self-evaluation and the transition plan. And then with the sidewalk, there's a specific height. I think it's .5 centimeters of what the difference in the sidewalk patches. These are minute things. This is probably not going to be a priority item, but something like this could be a difficulty for somebody who's using a mobility device. And then here, we can see that the sidewalk is split where the pole comes up. So technically, there is space, but it wouldn't be large enough for somebody that's using a wheelchair, say. And what we also say is the curb cut effect is this really benefits everybody, right? It's not just folks with disabilities. You can see somebody has a stroller, somebody's using a scooter. It really does help benefit everybody when these improvements are made and helps just uplift the community in general. So I've included my contact information. I'm going to use... leave my cards here for you, but I wanted to thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Alderman Widener?
So CMAP will be evaluating Warrenville's conditions for the next 10 months. Is that correct? And be coming back with a report for us?
So we... it doesn't usually take... we'll have a team... there's kind of a couple of different ways that you can do the self-evaluation. And so we'll have... we have a consultant that will actually be doing that work, that'll identify all of those barriers, but then also working with you to have the plan at the end of it. So it's not just the identification, it's also figuring out what are the methods of how we'll address this. And that's what we'll give both of those documents at the end of the 10 months.
And is there an appeal to residents in the community to respond if they notice anything like some of those fine pictures you were showing, that they could send them in to someone for action?
Yeah. If I understand your question right, we'll... usually what we like to do is we'll have a couple of different public open houses or a way that you can go online, fill out a survey, or put a pin on a map online to identify this problem area is important to me, so that that way we can get that both, not just at the end of when all of these documents are drafted, but during the drafting process, so that we kind of, as we're working along, we can have all of these comments as we go through it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you. And then with the... it looked like a high percentage of visual and hearing impairments. How is that addressed through a study like this or through a community like Warrenville?
Yeah, that's a great question. So one of the instances that I can think of is the push buttons when you have a crosswalk. So some of that, you're supposed to technically have an auditory signal. And so that would be something that would address, or like a sign that has Braille. So those would be kind of the elements of what I'm thinking of when it comes to not just the physical component, but if there's signage that needs to be included, high flashing elements, those would be all included when it comes to the public right-of-way.
Does IDOT or any other state get involved with this and provide... say, you know, that there's... you're missing the auditory system at a light standard for crossing a busy street. Does the support...
Such good question. Yeah. Yeah. So we're working... I'm currently working on another transition plan in a different community, and a lot of the priority areas that we're seeing are understandably these like really high, highly trafficked arterials or highways that happen to not be within municipal jurisdiction. And so I was just talking to a consultant this morning that how that results in the plan is that there will be a section of if there are high priority areas that are not within your jurisdiction, that are a different one, then we'll still write those up. And then we're actually trying to figure out how we can, at CMAP, help uplift that for you. But within the plan, we'll still be highlighting that so that you also, in your Public Works Department, could also be in coordination with IDOT and any other... any county road, stuff like that, to get them involved as well in the process. So does that... yeah, it's a little bit more kind of at the end when we have the documents, so we can identify who the jurisdiction is, but we would definitely like to uplift this.
So there might be outside support or funding for those kinds of elements once we identify where they are?
Definitely.
And then my final question is, I think with mobility issues, I hear a lot of things around the community about the length of time it takes some individuals to cross streets before the signal changes from pedestrian can cross to being prepared for or ready, changed for vehicle traffic. And I just wondered, does CMAP look at those kinds of things? The timed... the amount of time it takes pedestrians to cross streets?
Yeah. So it's the... I forget the technical term. There's the manual of traffic control devices. I think I'm missing a word in there somewhere. But it essentially lays out what are the standard timings for crosswalks and whatnot. And so some of those might need to be updated then in your jurisdiction to actually align with the correct timing. So there is a standard for it, but there also could be a recommendation of, hey, we know this is really highly trafficked. Even if it is the correct timing, we might ask if we can adjust it to reflect people's needs for more time.
Okay. Thank you for your good information. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Any other... Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. So this is Chicago. I mean, this is... you're working for an organization from Chicago, right? And so helping us to do this. So is there any influence for what you were just answering Alderman Widener's question? Let's say federal. So for instance, our post office is most people that are having trouble walking or just cannot get into it. There's no way the doors don't open. It's really crazy. And I've talked to them about it, and they just... they said something about, well, you can come back into the service entrance or something. I don't know. And so... but nobody knows where that is. And so I'm wondering, what do you do if your issue isn't Warrenville? Which I think... actually, I think Warrenville does a decent job. Not perfect, but I think it's pretty good. But the federal government is getting a failing grade, if you ask me. So how does... there's no coordination, where you'd have to call your congressman or something, right? To get anything done about that?
Yeah. I mean, technically, they should have a grievance procedure, same as anybody else to elevate those complaints. And you're talking specifically about the building?
Yeah. I noticed in another post office, not just ours, but I... certainly ours is not very good. So I just wondered if this dovetailed at all with...
Yeah. So our... this project that we're talking about here is only looking at the public right-of-way, but technically, a public entity also needs a transition plan that covers their building, which is outside of the scope of this project. But that is something that technically they should have. So I would imagine reaching out to your local representative.
Yeah. I just wanted to check about procedures.
Yeah. But it could be something that if, you know, if folks are commenting about getting to the building, then that's something that we can uplift in the plan. And kind of putting it in writing might also help forward things along.
Thank you for the presentation. It's very good.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Someone care to make a motion? Alderman Wilkie?
Make a motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding by and between the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning and the City of Warrenville to develop a public right-of-way, P-R-O-W, self-evaluation and transition plan that adheres to the title, "Two Obligations of the ADA."
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to item number two, consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Warrenville and PACE Ride Share Access Program. Analyst Hernandez Galvin?
All right. Good evening again. As noted in the Public Works Committee of the whole meeting this past August, PACE has been gathering data and information about the Ride Do Page Uber Access Pilot Program. With that information, they have now decided to transition the program into an official program called the Ride Share Access Program. So with that, PACE is requiring a separate IGA to each sponsor that wishes to participate in the RAP program. We had our city attorney review the IGA between the City of Warrenville and PACE. And some of the... one of the changes with this IGA is PACE is now requiring a... including a minimal additional cost, which is $1.50 per trip that's booked through the app and $3 if the trip is booked through the calling center. And we are asking that City Council pass a resolution approving the Ride Share Access Program between the City of Warrenville and PACE. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion? Alderman Crockenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council pass a resolution approving a Ride Share Access Program RAP reimbursement agreement between the City of Warrenville and the suburban bus division of the Regional Transportation Authority, PACE.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number three, consideration of city liability insurance renewal for 2025. Assistant Administrator Morgan?
Thank you and good evening. Included with your agenda backup material is a letter from Gallagher, the city's insurance broker, which provides details on the overall package for insurance renewal for the next calendar year 2025. This year's total premium came in at $594,896. This does reflect a 16.4% increase from last year. While the increase is higher than in previous years, it is important to note that the city did experience a few large workers' compensation claims over the last two years, which drove the higher increase. However, the remaining coverage lines do remain... they did increase as expected, in line with other municipalities. Additionally, this year, the Illinois Public Risk Fund provided the city with a grant in the amount of $15,291. That's a safety grant that the city can use for safety-related equipment, training, and programming. And lastly, there is sufficient funding in the fiscal year 25 budget for this expense, and additional funding will be included in the proposed fiscal year 26 budget. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No questions. Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion? Alderman Crockenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council accept a renewal quote from Gallagher for city insurance coverages for calendar year 2025 in the amount of $594,896.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, consideration of police department request to solicit and accept donations for 2025 Special Olympics, Illinois, and National Night Out Against Crime events. Chief Benia?
Good evening. This is our annual request for authorization for staff to solicit and accept services, cash, and like-kind donations for the calendar year of 2025 for our Special Olympics programs and our National Night Out. As you know, both of our... both of those programs are very successful and very popular within the community, and we've raised a lot of money equivalent to some of even the larger towns within our surrounding areas for Special Olympics. And our National Night Out has been very successful and popular with bringing the community together and having a lot of events that are very popular that way. So for this year, we're requesting our annual time to solicit donations. So any questions?
Thank you. They're all great events. Any questions from the council? Alderman Widener?
Yes. In the backup materials, there's a mention of raffle being one of the things that the police would engage in to acquire funds for these events. And I was just wondering what those raffles might consist of.
Well, we haven't done those, but I think we usually keep those in there just in case we were to have one, but we have not had a raffle.
Okay. Any plans to have a raffle?
None that have been discussed that I'm aware of, although we probably could entertain one, but we haven't done one in the past. So I think that's just in there to show what we're required to do in case we do have one.
And then there's... is there any kind of restriction on... I'm not certain that there would be any kind of legal action against someone who you might approach for a raffle, but I just wonder... or for a solicit... for a donation. And I just wonder whether the police department restricts itself if there's any kind of legal action that's taking place with that business entity through the City of Warrenville or other groups?
So I'm not quite sure I understand what.
Well, if... say there was like, you know, I don't know whether you go to bars or restaurants for donations, but say there was an underage drinking violation or something like that that was in a court of law presently or something like that? Or any other kind of legal action? I just wonder whether or not it would be good to back off of a request for a donation in those kinds of circumstances if there was any kind of legal action going on between the police department or the city and that business entity that was being approached?
Sure. I would agree with the appearance of that not being very well. But I think we're very careful with accepting our donations from our annual people that we normally get donations from or that participate in those events.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, can I have a motion? Alderman Crockenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the City Council approve the request to solicit donations for all calendar year 2025 events, including National Night Out Against Crime and Special Olympics, Illinois Law Enforcement Torch Run Events.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Eyes have it. We'll move on to item number five... or I'm sorry, number five, consideration of mayor and city council FY '26 budget consideration submissions. And that would be... Mr. Dolestran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Included with your agenda backup material tonight is the... is a budget consideration form submitted by an elected official. The action requested would be an increase in the compensation for city elected officials. The... there is additional information that has been received since this item went out. I'm going to ask the city administrator to assist with that answer.
Thank you. So the city's attorney has weighed in at my request on what would be required. Because of the way the statute is written, we would have to... or the council would have to take formal action to approve changes to compensation a minimum of 180 days before the next election. So if we are directed to move forward with considering this item in the upcoming fiscal year work plans, we would not... we would move forward with making a recommendation, having some research, probably creating a work group with a couple of members of the council for input. But any action taken by the city council would not take effect until the election of April of 2027 for the first time. would not take effect until the election of April of 2027 for the first time.
Any, Alderman Davalos?
So is there any, how long has it been? I mean, I guess we would do that in the work group and it would be, I may not have read the thing carefully enough to know, but I'm trying to remember.
When the last time it changed?
Yeah. I never thought about it, but.
We have not done that level of research. So typically with these types of budget requests, we don't do a ton of initial research because the question right now is, does the council want this to be included in fiscal year 26 work plans and generally budget? This one doesn't specifically have a fiscal year 26 budget impact, so we haven't done a ton of research. I don't know.
I'll say it's not tied to me, but I know for the 18 years I've been here, it hasn't changed. It's been at least that long.
Okay, thanks.
Twenty years. When I was elected in 2005, and pay I get today is the same, so it has not changed. And I think that was when the last time it was changed for the alderman and the mayor. Twenty years ago.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments from the council? Alderman Widener?
Yes, I submitted this budget consideration request, and I greatly appreciate Kevin's providing the backup information. And because it had been roughly, you know, two decades, maybe more, since it had been looked at, you know, I thought that it might be something that the council would, would want to, to look at and take a closer look at the comparables with other units of government, see where we're at, and, you know, make a determination whether or not it would be worthwhile to pursue or not. So I guess, generally speaking, I would favor, you know, a subcommittee maybe, or I don't know what you want to call them, a group of aldermen, a work group of aldermen, to at least take a look at it and, you know, take a closer look at the backup material that the finance director has provided and consider it. At this point, it seems like a good time, because none of us know if we're going to be running for election in 2027. So I don't think it would appear to be a self-serving action on anyone's part to be able to take, take a look at this and at least consider it. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do I have a motion? Alderman Crockenburg out. I'm sorry. Barry?
Thank you.
Spread it around.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council approve inclusions for FY2026 elected official budget consideration, request entitled salary increase for city council members and mayor in the FY2026 budget presentation process.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to number six. Consideration of an ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 5, Section 1 and 5, impoundment of motor vehicles used in connection with illegal activities and administrative tow fees. Chief Benia?
Yes, we are requesting that the council approve an ordinance changing the fees that we have for an administrative tow. Over the past few years, there's been a significant increase in certain motor vehicle violations that we've seen within Warrenville and throughout DuPage County. And we want to address some of those things when it comes to our administrative tow ordinances. Violations like fleeing and eluding and reckless driving, we want to increase the fines for that as far as our administrative tow goes. Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to increase the fines across the board for all administrative toes. For things like suspended driver's license will stay the same. However, for the more significant items that have more investigative work associated with them or follow-up work that go with that, we are looking to increase the fines to 950 for those, specifically for items like fleeing, eluding, reckless driving, unlawful use of a weapon, and unlawful possession of a firearm and firearm ammunition.
The, so you're, are you looking for everything that's in the backup or just those items?
Well, there's more items that we have associated with the back, with the ordinance, but those are just specifically the ones that are the more important ones that we kind of wanted to address. Well, I just wanted to stress that we're not doing them all, when all the violations that we have in there are not being raised, just the, just the more serious ones.
Well, I, and my question would be, I'm looking at the backup and all the items that were underlined as a possible change. And I, the, I guess my question is, a lot of them don't seem like they're motor vehicle offenses. I'm just trying to figure out how that ties together and with due process and.
Sure, I understand. So they, they are associated with the vehicle because the administrative tow would only have to do with stopping a vehicle, investigating a crime, and if the vehicle is associated with that crime when it's stopped, that's when the administrative tow kicks in, not typically when we go to, like if we go to somebody's house or something like that, where it's unrelated. This is mostly related to like traffic stop offenses.
What would be a regular hit and run accidents versus the one that would require?
One that a police officer doesn't observe. These are mostly crimes that an officer would observe, affect a traffic stop or attempt to affect a traffic stop. But a hit and run, there could be an incident where we have a hit and run where it's called in after the fact and we can't even locate the vehicle.
Do, I guess along with that, do most of our major intersections, do they have cameras so that, that time and date of the incident that occurred could be reviewed on, on video?
None, none of our intersections have cameras, other than flock cameras that just record the license plate.
Is there any, any plans, plans for that? It seems like if the, the problem is increasing on reckless driving and fleeing, fleeing and eluding, that you would not necessarily for speed enforcement or red light cameras like we had in this town before, but for the potential to be able to review an incident that physically eluded us, but could be captured on video. Would that, that be something that would be looked at and, you know, as a use of technology?
Sure, that's something that we could look at. But we're looking, with this, we're only looking for where if a vehicle doesn't stop for us. We're not really like, the camera will show the vehicle not stopping. I don't know, we'd have to look further into that to see how installing cameras would help us in stopping these crimes, other than, because with this, you have a police officer who observed it already. We don't need a camera that's going to show anything other than what's on the squad camera or the body camera already. And this would be just associated with the vehicle not stopping for a police officer.
Mm-hmm.
So I understand what, I understand your question. I just don't think the cameras in the context of this ordinance would, would help that. I think this is for a vehicle that's about to get towed for criminal activity that was observed by a police officer. Whereas, I, I understand what you're asking is, would that help in the fighting grants, other hit and runs? We'd have to look further into that. I really couldn't answer that associated with this.
And you were saying that there's a significant increase in, like locally and in the, within the county of fleeing and eluding and reckless driving?
Yes.
I don't know about unlawful use of, of weapon or unlawful possession of firearm and firearm ammunition, but is, is there any statistics or study that, that we can point to, to see the increase from like 10 years ago to present and to see, you know, how much it's, it's growing?
Sure, I can, I can.
I'm just, I'm just kind of curious as to how big this problem is growing, because I think, you know, there's also, you know, statewide and nationally, a lot of pedestrians and hit and runs that are going on. And I think, you know, besides, I'm in favor of the, this, the ordinance changes and everything like that, but I would also like to see it, you know, be addressed nationally, locally, and, you know, countywide, because I think it's, it's, it's rising in significant proportion.
I can't answer for hit and runs, but certainly with the fleeing and eluding and reckless driving, we have seen an increase not just in DuPage County, but statewide and nationally. So, but for, for just our local ordinance, I just focused on DuPage County and Warrenville.
Well, if there's other, other tools that would help alleviate these problems, I think, you know, I'd definitely be, be one to, want to consider implementing those tools to reduce these, these situations.
Absolutely.
Because that's a huge regard, disregard for a law enforcement presence. And I think that's a, that's a serious situation that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
And we're trying to with the ordinance. So, yep.
Any other questions from the council? Just a comment, Alderman Widener. We, we do have our countywide system of cameras that help us to track people that have, have committed things that they're aware of, and they have the license number of the car. So they can, at the major intersections on the major thorough phase, so at least they can track somebody that has done something that they're aware of.
Yeah, that would be the situation if a prior arrest warrant was on that person, but it wouldn't necessarily capture an individual who might drive through an intersection at a reckless state. And you'd be able to replay that and, and look at it in real time. So, point taken. I understand. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we, they, barring any further questions, do we have a motion? Alderman Crockenburg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend city council approve an ordinance amending city code Title V, Chapter 5, Section 1, impoundment of motor vehicles used in connection with illegal activities, and Section 5, Chapter 5, Section 5, administrative tow fees as illustrated through draft ordinance language strikeouts and inserts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item seven, consideration of an ordinance, the, let me see, consideration of ordinance amending Title V, Chapter 4, Section 2, Stop Intersections to modify the Tracy Place-Curtis Avenue and Warren Avenue intersection. Chief Benia?
Right. In the same theme of public safety, we're looking to add stop signs to Warren Avenue and Tracy Place and Curtis Avenue. And Curtis Avenue, Tracy Place, where there's currently a two-way stop sign. Earlier this year, a resident had requested that staff review the stop sign configurations at Curtis Avenue and Tracy Place intersection, intersecting with Warren Avenue and the Manning Avenue-Warnen Avenue. Public Works staff consulted with the city's traffic engineer and the police department staff, and we coordinated a traffic study of the area where we looked at the volume of cars that go through that intersection and the configuration of that intersection. We are looking to convert those to four-way stops in the interest of safety of those. One is kind of like with Curtis Avenue and Tracy Place intersecting there, there's a slight bend in the roadway where it tends to be quite dangerous. Now, we don't have a lot of accidents there because it's, it's a low speed already. So we don't have many, but we see a lot of near misses or almost accidents there, a lot of horn honking because of problems there, especially during the summertime when we have higher traffic because of the park district camps and things like that. So, so we took that all into consideration. We figured that it would be a lot safer if that intersection was a four-way stop. We then looked at Manning and Warren Avenue, and which is almost a sister intersection, it's very similarly situated, where you don't have the bend in the road necessarily, but you have the parked cars that can obstruct traffic. So we looked at that as well, and we thought that maybe increasing that, making that a four-way stop as well would help the flow of traffic as it flowed through on Warren Avenue. So, if there's any questions for that, I'd be glad to answer them.
The, I can tell you, I've been at the Manning Corner, and people don't know, they don't know there's a stop sign or not. I don't know how else to phrase it. There's funny reactions. You have to watch yourself. What, will it require much modification of the intersection at Curtis and Warren, just because of the way the curb is sticking out there with the park district? And also, is that something, because of the amount of cars that are parked there, that we should have a flashing red light on it or something that makes sure people see it? Because the, once people are, you recognize it, the ones who don't, won't look for the stop sign.
Sure, understood. We can use a lot of means to notify the public on that. I don't know if we necessarily need flashing signs or flashing lights. What we do is, we normally do a campaign to put that out on social media to let everybody know. And then what we do is, when we normally put up new stop signs, we flag them. So they have like neon flags to let everybody know that there's a new stop sign there to get everybody acclimated to that.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? No questions. Can I have a motion? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council approve an ordinance amending city code Title V, Chapter 4, Section 2, Stop Intersections as illustrated through draft ordinance language strikeouts and inserts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight, an informational update on calendar year 2024 property tax levy and abatement ordinance. Finance Director Dolestran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to provide a brief update on the upcoming 2024 property tax levy ordinance. And we will also then, at the same time, be doing an abatement ordinance to abate the debt service on the 2023 bonds that we, that we issued in April of 2023. The Winfield Township EAVs right now are projected to increase approximately 9.5%. And the new construction in Winfield Township for 2024 was approximately $4.3 million. The Naperville Township's EAVs are projected to increase 11.29%. And new construction in, in that part of town was $15.1 million. In key, 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 keeping with the city council directive, the city will again buy by the 2020, sorry, 2004 ordinance, number 2118, where we self-impose the property tax caps, even though we are a home rule community. And as a reminder, the 2024 tax cap limit is 3.4%. And then on December 16th, we will conduct the public hearing, a second reading and consideration of that property tax levy ordinance. And we will also then offer a second reading and consideration of the abatement ordinance as well.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Thank you very much. Item number nine, informational update on the problem-oriented policing unit activity. Chief Benia?
Thank you, Chairman. So this is just an update on our problem-oriented policing unit, also known as our POP unit, which specializes in crime reduction within the city. This was restored in May of 2024 after being on hiatus for a while, mostly due to manpower. Now that our manpower is being somewhat restored to the police department, we're able to utilize this team of officers again to be proactive within the community and focus on areas where there may be problems and higher criminal activity. So right now, Officer Pickens and Officers Colón Alatriste are on the unit, and they've been trained in drug enforcement, gang and vice investigations, and improving the quality of life within the city of Warrenville. So what I wanted to do is give kind of an update on what they've been up to since they've been back on the street and have been active. So they made over 100 traffic stops since July 1st. They've written 33 traffic citations. They have six local ordinance charges, five of them alcohol-related. They made 17 arrests, 14 of them were cannabis-related, one of them was possession of a controlled substance, and we had two warrants. And then we've had three gun-related arrests, five of them. five of them resulting in felony charges, including one which was a Class X felony for armed habitual criminal. Again, these are officers going out there and locating these crimes within Warrenville before they become out of control or before somebody's even reporting them. They're going out and finding this and stopping it. In addition, the efforts, they worked externally with Naperville Police Department Statistic Response Unit. And they recovered 23 guns with Naperville's tech unit out at Topgolf, which borders right on Warrenville. So even though it's not within the borders of Warrenville, it still poses a potential threat to our residents. So we've allowed our tech guys to go with them and assist them in, in helping them get those guns. They've also gained experience in doing that so they could bring that back to our community and do the same thing. Some of the targets that we're looking at this, for the upcoming year, focusing on areas like Main Event, in the parking lot areas there and, you know, checking on the area to make sure it's something safe, like Top, like they did at Topgolf. And we're looking at maybe checking some of the hotels and the parking lots to make sure that those are going okay and keeping safe. Again, if anything comes to our attention within the community, we can always redirect the officers to focus on there. But mostly they're out there being proactive and making sure that we're stopping crime before it harms anybody within the city of Warrenville or anywhere else.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm sure I speak for everybody here in town. Thanks for the good work and pass that on. Any comments or questions from the council? Alden Widener?
Yeah, with, I think everyone's heard of these gun arrests at, at Topgolf. And I just wonder, are the POP units on foot patrol when they're finding those incidents? Or are, and are they within the business establishment? Or are they out in the parking lots?
So typically, typically, because not in all cases, obviously there's a lot of them that have different facts surrounding them. But most of the time, they're, they're out on foot and they're just walking around just to make sure, to see what they can see. They're within, you know, a public way or someplace where they're allowed to be. And if they observe criminal activity, they're allowed to act on it. And that's what they've been doing is being proactive in that manner.
And can you shed light on how, on how many of these situations, the, where there's, I guess firearms found, are there occupants in the car? Or are they outside of the car and doing whatever they do at, at Topgolf?
So again, there's, there's been several different facts surrounding each of the cases. And I, I really couldn't go into all of them, but I could say for typically, these are things that are actually just being spotted sitting out in the open. And then the officers are just waiting for their occupant to return to the vehicle, interview them, and then investigate further, which leads them to possible arrests.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alden Berry?
So this says that there's 100 traffic stops. So when you say a traffic stop, is that they've just observed a vehicle going down the street that might have a taillight out? And they would stop that vehicle? Is that what we're talking about? Or are you talking about these gun-related things where they're at the Topgolf or wherever? And the car is in the parking lot, they're not driving it, but it's in the parking lot and they see someone with a gun? You know, so I mean, how does, how are we figuring this out here?
I understand. So I did not, in, in the stats above, I did not include the Naperville issue. That's Naperville's arrest. I just wanted to show that we were assisting them in, in obtaining those. So I didn't include those in our statistics.
Okay.
Ours are just ours. When they observe a vehicle that warrants probable cause for a stop, they stop the vehicle, conduct an investigation, and look for criminal activity associated with that traffic stop.
I just get concerned with, you know, you know, profiling, that kind of thing. I just don't want cars stopped because, I don't know, we think that the car doesn't look good or whatever. I mean, it lets a legitimate stop.
That's the only stops we make, ma'am. Legitimate stops.
I just want the public to understand that, that we aren't doing that kind of thing.
No, absolutely not. My officers will, every one of my officers, not just the POP unit, will not stop a vehicle unless they have cause to stop that vehicle within the law.
I know it's so difficult nowadays as you drive and so many cars, the windows are so heavily tinted that it's, sometimes it is hard to profile someone because you can't see in the car to begin with. I notice that a lot. And are there rules about that kind of thing as to how tinted the windows can be?
Yes, there are rules in Illinois with how.
Are people ever stopped for that kind of thing?
I'm sure they are. I couldn't answer that for sure. I'm sure they are stopped for a wide variety of equipment violations within Illinois.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
And if there's a question, everything's on video anyway.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions from the council? Thank you very much. Item number 10, information update and six-month check-in on citywide fiscal year 2025 work plan.
Thank you. Included with your agenda backup material is a copy of the fiscal year 25 citywide work plan. Earlier this year, the work plan was incorporated into the city's budget process to provide the city council with a list of large multi-departmental initiatives and corresponding prioritization. It has been approximately six months since the budget was adopted. And so this evening, this item is presented so that you may review the initiatives, provide feedback, and make changes to the priorities, to the prioritization of the projects if you so desire. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions from the council? Thank you.
We're locked in for the rest of the year. Thank you.
Item number 11, review and file administration, finance, police department fiscal year 2025 work plans and decision package status report. Anybody have any questions for the staff regarding that, council? Seeing none, thank you. That, that concludes the business of the meeting. I just, we need one more motion. Alden Kruckenberg?
I'd like to move for adjournment.
Second?
Oh, go ahead.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you all. Great meeting.